I did.
Good morning and welcome, good morning and welcome to the Board of Commissioners meeting, and we will begin with a moment of silence, and I'd ask if just on this occasion of this 82nd anniversary of the Pearl Harbor incident, which reminds us of the cost of freedom that we enjoy, sacrifices made on our behalf. Thank you. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have time for public comment, but I don't see any potential takers there, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of our November 16 meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve those minutes. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved. Now move on to Treasurer Newland's report.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
We have receipts of December the 5th and 6th of $10,138,794.79. That brings us to a total cash of $11,746,992.90. We had expenditures this week of $9,396.93. The tax claim is $9,605.20. Leaves us a balance of $2,398,326.95.
Motion.
Make a motion to approve the treasurer's report, subject to all.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the treasurer's report as presented. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, post same sign, so moved. Thank you, Sal. All right. Good morning, Shaw.
Good morning. Shaw Snively, Director of Human Resources. Under personnel transactions, I have resignations and terminations. Jennifer Vasquez, casual part-time court clerk in the clerk of courts. Resignation effective November 22nd, last working day, November 29th. David J. Warner Jr., county solicitor, Commissioner's Office. Resignation effective December 31st. Charlotte Morrison, telecommunicator, Department of Emergency Services. Job abandonment effective November 26th. Jasmine Milhorne, full-time correctional officer at the jail. Resignation effective November 17th. Peola LeBron Jimenez, office support two, probation services. No call, no show, effective December 4th. Isaiah Torres, part-time court clerk in the pathogen's office. Resignation effective November 20th, last working day, November 15th. Natasha Manfred, general clerk C in the pathogen's office. Resignation effective December 22nd. And Joseph Calice, casual part-time office support one in the sheriff's office. Resignation effective November 27th.
Make a motion to approve these resignations and terminations.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve those transactions. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Under leaves of absence, I have Michael White, public defender. Two-week intermittent leave of absence, effective November 13th. Return November 27th. Holly Whitmer, LCCF jail, nine-week LOA, effective November 7th. Returning January 8th. Paige Hess, children and youth, 14-day leave of absence, effective November 27th. Returning December 11th.
Make a motion to approve the leaves of absence as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Under changes to status, transfers, and promotions, I have several motions. The first motion to approve the recommendation of Chief Clerk/County Administrator Jamie Wogumuth to eliminate the Deputy Chief Clerk/County Administrator position at a grade 19 on the non-union salary chart, effective immediately.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve that request. Any comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Motion to approve the recommendation of Chief Clerk/County Administrator Jamie Wogumuth to reclassify and retitle the current administrative assistant-free position in a grade 11 on the non-union salary chart to Deputy Chief Clerk at a grade 15 on the non-union salary chart, effective December 24, 2023.
Make a motion to approve the Deputy Chief Clerk position.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments? Questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Motion to approve the reclassification of the county solicitor position at a grade 10 on the non-union salary chart to a grade 17 on the non-union salary chart, effective December 24, 2023, for the 2024 budget year.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve this motion requested for the full-time position. Any questions or comments? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Motion to approve the reclassification of the assistant county solicitor position at a grade 9 on the non-union salary chart to a grade 16 on the non-union salary chart, effective December 24, 2023, for the 2024 budget year.
Make a motion to approve the county solicitor position as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Vanessa Cologne, promotion from general clerk C/interpreter in the clerk of courts to second deputy/interpreter in the clerk of courts at the rate of $990.17 by weekly with $57.69 by weekly interpreter pay, effective December 11th. Dawn Policio, promotion from administrative assistant three in the commissioner's office to deputy chief clerk in the commissioner's office at the rate of $2,170.39 by weekly, effective December 24th. Lexi Prankensa, promotion from caseworker one at MHIDEI to caseworker two at MHIDEI at the rate of $1,661.28 by weekly, effective December 10th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved. Congratulations, Dawn.
Thank you.
And she's in charge now of snow days, so she wants us to finish by before 11 today, so get out of this. Okay. Congratulations. Well deserved. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Under other transactions, Commissioner's Office would like to hire Matthew Bugley as county solicitor at the rate of $3,023.52 by weekly, effective January 2, 2024. Community Action Partnerships would like to rehire Erin Gilliams as housing care manager at the rate of $1,452.89 by weekly, effective December 11, 2023. President Judge Tillwack would like to hire Lisa Hallcell as judicial secretary to Judge Breko at the amount of $1,578.66 by weekly, effective January 2, 2024. President Judge Tillwack would like to hire Krista Geiger as admin assistant one at the rate of $1,169.52 by weekly, effective December 11th, and that is in domestic relations. President Judge Tillwack would like to hire Kayla Guero as an admin enforcement locate assistant two in domestic relations at the rate of $1,257.23 by weekly, effective December 11th. MHIDEI would like to hire Veronica Salzer as accountant one at the rate of $1,452.89 by weekly, effective December 11th. And President Judge Tillwack would like to hire Brian Gower as an adult probation officer one in probation services at the rate of $1,828.9 by weekly, effective December 11th.
Make a motion for the other transactions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the transactions as presented. Any questions regarding any of those? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved. Sorry.
Moving on to salary board, motion to approve all transactions previously read plus the following. Juan Lopez, longevity payment, full-time correctional officer at the jail. One-time payment of $500 for three years of service, effective December 14th. Danielle Linares Herador, salary increase, assistant district attorney one at the rate of $2,531.2 by weekly, effective December 11th. Thomas Moyer, salary increase, network technician and information technology services to the rate of $2,773.69 by weekly, effective December 11th. Brandon Nunez, salary increase, network technician and information technology services to the rate of $2,773.69 by weekly, effective December 11th. Mallory Hetrick, longevity payment, probation officer one. One-time payment of $1,232.32 for three years of longevity, effective December 14th. Catherine Baker, longevity payment, probation officer one. One-time payment of $1,232.32, effective December 14th, for three years of service. Derek Gangrick, longevity payment, probation officer two. One-time payment of $2,059.33, effective December 14th, for nine years of service. Randall Stewart, longevity, probation officer two. One-time payment of $2,486.64, effective December 14th, for 12 years of service. Matthew Klein, longevity payment, probation officer two slash assistant supervisor. One-time payment of $3,467.64, effective December 14th, for 21 years of service, and this is to comply with the collective bargaining agreement.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those salary board transactions. Questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved. Thank you. I'm sorry, go ahead, yes.
That's okay, thanks. I didn't want to disrupt your flow, had so many. But I just want to understand, so obviously Dave Warner resigned because he was elected MDJ. You've created a full-time county solicitor position?
The position wasn't, I guess it really wasn't designated either full-time or part-time. It was a salaried, it was salaried at a full-time position, but the, but the time put in and has historically been that the solicitor's not here in a building, so it was somebody that was part of a firm and contributed their time from outside the building. So this, this, the difference is this person will be full-time county employee located, you know, here at the courthouse all day for all county work. No, you know, mixture of outside and county work.
No private practice.
Right, no private practice, better way to put it, yeah.
And Matthew Bugley, what is his background? Is he from around here, or what?
He's from Palmyra area. He works now, right now, for a small firm in, on the West Shore. Does some municipal solicitorship work and some right-to-know work and so on in that capacity, and has gone from private to public centers. So he's interested in this work, a young attorney, so I look forward to having him.
And will his status as a full-time here in the building, I know oftentimes you have like a labor attorney and various other like specialty attorneys.
Right.
Will you still have those, or will he handle some of those duties?
I'm anticipating he'll be in tune or, you know, monitored with those, but the labor attorney, we're not changing that arrangement, no. So he'll be pegging more for labor.
And there's also the creation of an assistant county solicitor?
No, we already have assistant county solicitor. Tom Long has been for many years. The changes that you're seeing are moving them into the grade that is reflective of the responsibility. It's, it's one of the outliers or one of the remainders that we didn't do in the salary study implementation, so we're just, we're just aligning those things while we're in the process of making this change anyway.
And is he full or part-time?
He's part-time.
Okay. Thank you.
Jamie, will this new guy be taking over the right-to-know request, or will you still handle that?
That's my plan, to be the right-to-know officer, and I mean, certainly there'll be a transition where, you know, Dawn and I work on, on those now, and, but, but hopefully he'll transition over to him being that person handling them all. Some of them are very routine, but some of them can get pretty complex. He has that, he has that experience. The right-to-know law is the same for municipalities as it is for counties. There's only one law, so he has that experience, yeah.
Let's let us know.
Okay.
Molly.
Good morning. Good morning. Molly Leahy, Administrator for Lebanon County Mental Health, Intellectual Disabilities, Early Intervention Programs. I'm here this morning to present some MHIDEI contract amendments. There are nine contract amendments in total, one for mental health, one for intellectual disabilities, and then the remaining seven are for early intervention. It is important to note that early intervention services are entitlement services, so they are fully funded by the state of Pennsylvania. And so we are requesting contract changes in the amount of $314,627. Since they are entitlement services and would be fully funded through the state of Pennsylvania, we are not requesting any additional county tax dollars to cover these services that will be rendered. It will be covered through our current budget.
Okay, good. Motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those 23, 24 contract amendments. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate you braving the snow to get here. All right. Now, we have, I see some graphics there, so Molly, would you like to come forward and introduce yourself and give us your presentation?
Yes, I do have some, just for you guys to follow along what I'm looking at for our project. I have one printed for each of you. There's two there.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Molly Lum. I'm the Assistant Township Manager at North Lebanon Township, so I'm here to present to you a walking path extension that was completed at our Park Lenny Lanape. We used the funds from the Marcelle Shale grant that we were awarded in 2021 for the match of $25,000 to complete this project. So first, I do want to thank you for the opportunity of grants and just for the funds to help us complete this project. We wouldn't have been able to do it without you, so teamwork makes the dream work, is what I'm thinking. So again, this took place at Lenny Lanape Park. It's located at 723 Narrows Drive, close by Unical Elementary School, if that helps put it in perspective there. Lenny Lanape is one of our newer parks, so we do have a large comprehensive plan that North Lebanon Township has adopted, and we decided to phase it out a few years ago when we knew it would be a big undertaking. So this was the final phase of our walking path that we were able to complete, which added about 1,500 feet for our residents. So more residents are drawn to this park. It is newer, it's a little more secluded up above some homes, so it's a nice setting. We've got a park, open-air pavilion, so the walking path does get used a great deal. So this was awesome to be able to extend that and give a little more length for our residents. Our board did support moving forward with this. They like to create the recreational space for our residents and give them some open areas to, you know, have family, friends, and just a good time. Our North Lebanon Township staff, our employees, did complete a majority of the work. They did the removing of the topsoil, which you can see up here, and then next they cut and compacted the subgrade soils and started creating the path, again, following the plan that we had adopted years ago. The next step was laying and rolling the stone, which you can see they started doing, started rolling, and we did hire PA asphalt to complete the paving portion of this project. And then finally, our employees did do the seeding and topsoiling around the path to help complete the look of it, and hopefully grass will grow soon. Not today, but, so our completed path is down below, if you can see that. So it does look wonderful, everyone did a great job. It was completed September of 2023, so just a few months ago is when we finally got everything finished up. Our total project cost was $58,193.20. So again, thank you for your contribution for the grant of $25,000 to help cut those costs down. We, we love this park, we love seeing our residents go to the park, have fun with family, so we appreciate your efforts into helping us make this work, make this happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you taking the time to come and express your thanks, because I think it was a perfect fit for that Marcelle Shale money. It's another good investment in the quality of life that we, we really try to make sure that we're doing on many levels, but this is a good example of the best use of that money, so.
Well, thank you. Thank you again for your time.
All right, Molly. Appreciate you coming in.
Yes, absolutely. Have a wonderful day.
You too.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jamie?
If you don't mind, can I just walk through the stack of things I have first, and then we'll go to budget to get a little closer to 10 o'clock as we've had on the agenda, so. First number of items I have are liquid fuels, applications for county aid, three of those. First is for Cleona Borough, 2023 paving using a Pennsylvania Investment Bank loan and to assist with paying the amortization on that loan. The total cost was $392,340. Their allocation is $2,013 for the borough toward that. Cornwall Borough is utilizing their, has utilized their funds for yearly patching. Total cost of $4,006.04, same allocation, $4,006.04 for the project, for the project. And East Hanover Township like to use funds for the Indian Town Gap Culvert, as they're calling it, $56,923.06. The project cost is $6,923.06 is the grant amount, and as I've mentioned to you before, there are a number of these that we're trying to clean up and get done here before the end of the year, so it'll be another, another handful that John Fiski will be forwarding, and then we should be able to wrap up the year.
I'll make a motion to approve the three liquid fuels funds request as presented.
Second. It's been moved and seconded that we approve those liquid fuels dispersments. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Next, I have an application for a loss prevention grant from the Pennsylvania County's Risk Pool, which is our, our insurance carrier for property and general liability. They provide a grant opportunity to each member county each policy year for efforts towards reducing liability, reducing slips and falls, anything that might contribute to making our properties safer or our exposures reduced. And so the Safety Committee is recommending a portion of that grant for two things. One, for the, for 30 Streamlight Protact flashlights with belt holders for the sheriff's office, which would be used for deputies when they're at an at-risk situation both day or night, and that total cost is $1,737.9. And we would also like to recommend the annual Guardian system renewal fee at the Lebanon County Correctional Facility. The Guardian RFID Spartan system is an accountability system that we have at the jail whereby the movement of inmates can be tracked at certain stations, as well as the check-in by staff, or example, when they're doing suicide watch, things like that, so that we have accountability, and in the event of a, of a claim or a loss, we can demonstrate those points of contact and so on. So that, and, and that is a system that was funded originally, the installation was funded by Pennsylvania County Risk Pool for any county that participated, and the annual maintenance of it is eligible from this grant. So that is $10,027.4. Again, we have a $30,000 grant, and I would say we're just about halfway to that.
Motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve those loss prevention grants. Any questions regarding any part of that motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved.
I have three hotel tax grant applications here, numbers 26, 27, 28. The first one for you is the Pennsylvania Chautauqua Foundation Art Show, and they are intending to have their show again, and obviously in 2024. This will be their 50th art show, and they are proclaiming 2024 the year of the arts in Mount Gretna, and they would like to utilize some funding for, toward their budget for mostly radio and TV advertising, billboards, et cetera. And they are requesting $10,000 toward a $16,000 project for advertising. As you know, your, your limit is $7,500, so they are, and they're aware as well, they're asking for you to waive that and grant additional funds, so that's.
I could make a motion for the $7,500. Our fund was down to like $20,000, and we have to tighten the reins so that we don't run out, and that it does reach for the year.
Second motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve $7,500 in this grant. Any questions regarding the motion? And I think we do have, well, let's take care of the motion first. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same signs, so moved. I think there should be a discussion at some point, maybe of even going down to $5,000 because of the tightness of that fund, so maybe we should think about that after we approve these and see how these, you know, come through, but that's, we're really getting to a place where we need.
Yeah, the fund was getting very low, as Fisher mentioned. Dawn did contact a number of the, those that hadn't utilized their funds and were even from a year or two ago, and those projects have, you know, long gone, so we were able to, we end up unencumbering some of those and putting it back into the fund, so we did gain a little bit in that regard, but sustaining it for all of 2024 at $7,500 has got to get pretty tight by, by mid-year or late summer, so. The next one then, and that, along those lines, the Community Health Council of Lebanon County is requesting funds for the Tour de Lebanon Valley 2024, which is a, I think you're all well aware of, a countywide bike ride that goes around the perimeter of the county for about 62 miles. They offer different levels of distance for anyone who wants to participate in the shorter, but they have, from my perspective, they have done a terrific job of demonstrating exactly what this grant is intended for, which is to bring people from outside of the area and, and even demonstrate how they, you know, how that benefits the area. And so they are requesting $8,000, which is also higher than the $7,500, again, being aware, and this total cost is $16,000 for the outreach.
Motion to adjust that $8,000 to $7,500, or to that. Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we approve $7,500 for that grant request. Questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Okay, and the last one I have is the Singing Cedar Chorus is asking for a grant of $2,500 for a barbershop show and concert to be held at the Church of the Good Shepherd, and they, let's see, it's going to be in September of 2024. They can seat 400 people, and they outline their costs for advertising the event and so on, and again, $2,500 of a, of a $3,500 total cost.
Make a motion to, excuse me, to approve the $2,500 request.
Second. Just a little discussion, maybe also when we address the amount of the new cap, if there's going to be one, we would talk about some, tightening some guidelines, or at least clarifying what the use of the tax is, you know, a little more clearly for the people that are applying.
Like the Tour de Lebanon Valley does.
Well, I don't know if we can anybody go that far, but, you know, she, Nicole does an excellent job with that, but at least to demonstrate, you know, filling the hotel rooms and the restaurants, is what the goal of it is, to replenish the fund, so, just, that'd be a discussion to add to the cap.
We, we could, you know, just simply say, how many hotel rooms do you anticipate and let them fill in the number?
Yeah, that's a big part of the discussion.
That would be a straightforward request, so that it would be in all the applications.
Okay, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post same sign, so moved.
Okay, next, I have a letter of support that's been requested from Tech Central for funding of the Tech Central Workforce Network, and that network includes a number of counties in addition to Lebanon, and they are requesting a 2023, 24 amount of $8 million, I believe. And they are requesting a 2023, 24 amount of $8 million, I believe. Yeah, the third, I'm sorry, no, they're requesting this third year of continued funding. Initially got $5 million, then for 23, 24 got $8 million. And they're seeking further funding from the Commonwealth and have asked for a letter of support from the county to be sent to the governor for the next round for the 2024, 25 state budget. And they are requesting in that budget $15 million for their centers in Berks, Lebanon, York, and Lancaster.
Motion. Motion approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved that workforce development request for the governor. Any questions regarding the motion? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
A few weeks ago, you met in a workshop with Karen Rao, Executive Director of the Lebanon County Housing Development Authority, Brian Hoffman of the same, and Shaila Ulrich, the Executive Director of the Carrion Cover Program. And they were in to discuss Act 137 Affordable Housing Funds for two projects. First project that you have already provided some funding to is Carney Place Project in South Anville Township, which is going to develop 48 affordable housing, two and three bedroom units. And they are asking additional, for additional funding. And at that time, there was discussion of allocating an additional $100,000 potentially toward that project. The second would be for the Carrion Cover Project, which is 12 affordable housing units on Broad Street in Palmyra. And they have, their request, I believe, was $500,000. From what I heard, it seemed there was an appetite for about $250,000 toward that project. So if you'd like to go in that direction, was it 250?
I thought we.
You're looking at me like, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that one doesn't.
Was it 125?
You know what? I'm sorry, shoot.
My notes have 250.
Okay, no, then we can go with your notes.
Okay, I'll make a motion to award Act 137 funds to Carney Place in the amount of $100,000 and Carrion Cover in the amount of $250,000.
It's moved in second, and any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
We'll triple check in if that changes on the 21st. I'm certainly on that one. Lastly, I have one exemption request for disabled veteran exemption from property taxes. David Watson, Cable Drive, Myerstown.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approved that property tax exemption. Any questions? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, so moved.
I'm going to go to the screen, so I'm also going to hand out the slide. So if you'd like to follow along either way. Going to talk about the 2024 proposed Lebanon County budget. With the first slide talking about some of the highlights of the budget. Some of them positive, some of them contributing to a deficit that I'll talk about in a moment. First, some of the line items in the budget are maintained in terms of committed to maintaining farmland preservation, libraries, parks, historical and civic associations, and some others, Coleman Park, for example, Governor Dick, some of these quality of life efforts that we have. The debt obligations are lowering slightly because of some retiring debt. And the new debt that we took out for the Department of Emergency Services Center is now a leveled out amount in the amortization. So from here on out, we have a very predictable debt service coming up in the next several years. So right now, it's, well, it's not going to be fluctuating much like it has in the last two years. We did benefit from some interest rate increases by the Federal Reserve, which have contributed to higher yields on the cash reserves that the county has. So there is a bit more revenue in that regard. However, the assessed value of real estate has pretty much remained close to the same at only 0.98% growth or 1% growth, which is the same as it was prior year 2023 at 1%. So while there's certainly housing subdivisions and things going on, it's, and those are visible in some places, it doesn't have that much of an impact on the overall assessed values of about $11 billion in Lebanon County. Property and liability insurance rates are increasing significantly. That is not only in Lebanon County, it's not necessarily due to our experience or losses, but more to do with the industry itself, which is experiencing a lot of natural disasters. The fires out west, believe it or not, affect this sort of thing where carriers and, and reinsurance carriers are seeing huge losses. And it's affecting their liquidity. And so the only way they have to recover some of that is to increase premium rates. And for 2024, Lebanon County is experiencing a 20%, experiencing a 20% increase in property and liability premiums. On the upside, our health insurance costs are increasing by 2%. And that is, I say on the upside because that is a relatively low number. Many are experiencing double digits. We have done fairly well in terms of our utilization and our experience in health insurance over the 22, 23 year. So that is increasing by 2%. And that is among the peer counties that were, that are in the pool that we belong to. That is the second lowest increase, second to zero. One county has a 0% increase. The highest is a 16% increase, and we're at the low end of that. Wages in the county, existing union contracts that we have in place currently are at 4% increase for 2024. Four of them are 4%, one is at 5%. I'll clarify a bit, but that one only has four members to the bargaining unit. So its impact on the average is very, very little. So 4% generally for existing union contracts. And budgeted for non-union is also 4% wage increase. I did speak to someone yesterday who shared a statistic with me that the average in the private sector has been 3.7% for 2023. So we seem to be right there. And as I'll get into a little bit more here, there's been a lot of effort toward maintaining workforce wages or in some cases catching up to. And, but unfortunately, that's contributed to the position we find ourselves in. So let me go right to that. The next slide shows the history of the county's budget in terms of surpluses and deficits over the last seven or eight years, going back to 2016. It's hard to forget the tax increase from 2016, very large one in the history of the county and was needed in order to get out of a deficit situation. And as was typical, we could usually hold that line for several years. As you can see, from 2016 to 17 to 18, the budget was pretty flat. In 2019, we began a small deficit. Usually we can go five, six, or seven years and hold the line. But in 2020, it went south very quickly, as you can see. Same for 2021, and this was a result of just a total change in, I guess, the great resignation, as it's been called. And we were beginning to have to increase wages and chase the workforce and the competition to try to keep our employees and recruit others. So in 20 and 21, we really grew a deficit that reached about $4 million. So in 21 to 22, there was a tax increase, a millage increase that, as I say, typically would, would hold for a number of years. But again, the workforce competition was still just like never seen before. And in 2023, due to negotiating some new contracts with large increases, implementation of a salary study the county had done a year or two earlier, that deficit grew and began the very, the very year it was imposed, the millage was imposed. And as you can see, grew till, till now of a $5 million deficit county. So during budget hearings, we tried to work through many of those, but much of this is due to personnel costs, wages, and benefits, et cetera. So the next page I'll show, slide that demonstrates what, where the county found itself and what was needed and where we find ourselves today. So back in 2020, we were pretty much on par with inflation or the CPI that is published every year. As 2020 went on and as the economy changed and the workforce changed, we dropped well below it, actually in negative numbers compared to the CPI. In reaction to that, we, as I said, started to increase wages, renegotiate contracts at higher levels, et cetera. The jail is an example that I think is easy to remember. We were at a starting wage of about $16 and increased that to $21 because we were nearly at a 50% vacancy of correctional officers there. That went to $21 and we found ourselves being able to improve that to the point where I think we only had three or four out of 75 vacant positions, which is typical on turnover anyway. However, we find ourselves today in around 2022 vacancies again. So we're still battling this. But over the course of time, those efforts at least brought us up to the current CPI. The latest numbers we had were the end of October. So we projected a little bit into the beginning of 2024 and those, we're meeting that again. So it doesn't mean that the, that the effort is over. We still have a number of places, again, the jail is one of them, Sheriff's Office is another. We have a number of places where we're, where there's a lot of competition. Just, I think Tuesday, Dauphin County announced that they have cranked up their starting wage for deputy sheriffs, which has now exceeded Cumberland County's starting wage, which was the leader in central Pennsylvania. So while we've done a lot here for that, we are still a fifth-class county that's surrounded by second, third, and fourth-class counties who just have a deeper pocket and more resources to, to make those offers. And we end up being poached, or however you want to put it. The Commonwealth also, all of the Commonwealth offices are only 30 miles from Lebanon County. So we find ourselves with a lot of social services employees who are, who find DPW maybe offering a better, a better wage, and we've lost people to that. So, but this slide does demonstrate that there was a, a problem that was created in 20 and 2021 and a reaction from the county that over the years, we have gotten ourselves back up to, at least even with inflation. Next slide talks about the proposed budget. Few capital items that are in this budget are a municipal building elevator upgrade. There's an elevator at the east end of the building, right by the Sheriff's Department, that is original to the building. We did replace the two main original elevators a few years ago. We have delayed the upgrade on this one for now a couple of years due to some budget, to budget tightening. But at this point, it's failing more than it's working. Parts are not available and it's just time to do it. And the delay that we've, that we've taken to address it, it's only gotten more expensive to fix. So that is in the budget for 2024. Increased storage and server backup for information security in the IT department is, is in there as well. Video software updates and upgrades for central booking and the jail are included. That is something they have come to utilize much more since, since the pandemic and it has stuck. Some like it and have continued to utilize it. But the, the technology we have been using is, is aged, so we're upgrading that. There are some facility improvements at the jail. It's a, it's a building that was built back in 1978 with a small addition put on in 2006. But we have some sections of the roof that are in need of repair. We have addressed a few of them. So we have $250,000 in the budget for a significant portion of the roof replacement at the jail for 2024, as well as some fencing improvements since the Chester County escape earlier this year. I think every, every jail facility in Pennsylvania has been taking a closer look at their perimeter security, both with video surveillance and physical fencing. And we're no different from that. So we did analyze that and, and found that there are some areas that need some improvement. And so we're going to do that. And lastly, other capital mention is some security improvements in the way of gate controls at the jail. Again, going back, you know, 45 years when it was built. It has electric controls, so there are electrically controlled gates, not electronically. And it's time we need to upgrade those. Some of them are not functioning any longer as they intended. And before we run into something that may pose a security issue, we want to make sure we can upgrade those. That is an expensive endeavor. The original estimate to do that is $988,000. So we are dividing that into phases over three years. Some other contributing factors to this operating deficit in addition to mainly the, the wage growth and competition that we've dealt with. We have inflationary increase in inmate health services costs. That is about a $3.5 million item at the jail for inmate health services costs. And while we have appreciated the vendor, Prime Care, having pretty low increases since 2019. In fact, it was zero increase for a couple of years. It was 1% last year and it's 3% for 2024. Still 3% on $3 million is a lot of money. The actuarially determined contribution, it's much easier when it was the ARC. So is, is our contribution, the county's contribution to the retirement fund in order to maintain a proper funded ratio in pension group, in the pension system. And that for 2024 is 3.7 million. And also just a graph there showing county support to agencies, agencies such as children and youth, Department of Emergency Services, mental health, and so on. Those are a constantly increasing, steadily increasing, as you can see, from 22 to 23. It was about a million and a half from 23 to 24. We're looking at about $3.25 million increase in county support to agencies. We continue to lobby Commonwealth for funding support, particularly in mental health. But we have yet to, to have some of the cuts from 10 years ago restored. Rather seeing stagnant funding in that, in that part of it. So the budget proposed is just on the next slide, sorry, broken down into a pie chart. This is something we provide every year, showing the breakdown of the categories of expenses. I mentioned, I mentioned debt service before, it's 2.7 million. I think we had, we had a spike to $3 million the first year of taking out that debt. But again, the retirement of other debt has brought that down. And I'm expecting 2.7 million to be pretty, pretty steady now. So all of that leads me to the numbers and the proposed or recommendation for the 2024 budget. Seeing the deficit on, on a prior page of $5 million, we do not have the capacity or the ability to take cash carryover and, and balance that budget. We, we do have reserves at the county. We have a reserve of $7.8 million, which equates to about 46 operating days if we ever find ourselves in some sort of a situation where there is no county budget, I'm sorry, is no state budget and we're having to fund ourselves or in order to, to, to fill the gap between the beginning of the year until taxes come along. Or if there's just some major disaster that the county must dig into reserves. We are maintaining those. It is always an option to go to those reserves to balance a budget. But in this case, for example, if we were to fill a $5 million gap with our cash reserves, that would take us from 46 operating days down to 15, which would be a pretty scary place. If we were even in a, even in a situation of needing short-term funds, we end up having to go to borrow and at today's rates. borrow and at today's rates, that's not very, that's not very palatable. So recommendation is to increase the millage a half of mil, half of a mil from 3.8925 to 4.3925. And as you see on the chart to the right, that would take us from a deficit on the prior slide of $5 million and exactly half a mil would take us to a surplus of $199,000 and a structurally balanced budget. Now, to put $199,000 surplus in perspective, the cost of county government is about $255,000 a day. So $199,000 surplus is basically a day. It's, it's. So the impact to property owners, if a, if a half mil is imposed, shown there on the left, for a home valued at $150,000, it would be $47 for 2024. A home valued at $250,000, $78 and a home valued at $350,000 would be $110. In Lebanon County, the average home is just above $250,000. So that 7850 is, I would, it's fair to say that that's the average cost of the increase. If you were to break that down further, not that anybody pays their taxes by the month, but that equates down to about $6.50 a month in an average increase, which would then boost the total property tax revenue to 46,296,000. The last page, oops, I didn't have that one. Last page is the overall budget detailed into different categories, real estate taxes being the largest source of revenues. I just mentioned that number, you'll see in the upper left corner there, all the others are relatively unchanged in terms of revenues. And then the expenditures on, are below that on the left with that surplus I mentioned. So that is the overview. Mr. It's a, it's up to you for a take action on proposed budget for 2024, put it on the table for 20 days of public view and we'd be, we'd be back on December 28th for final approval of the budget.
First of all, I want to thank you and the team that put this together, worked so hard to get it to, to this level. A lot of challenges, a lot of compromises took place getting it from start over $7 million to get it to five. Still have a responsible product here to present to the public.
So yeah, just follow up on a little bit of, I guess, a picture of where counties are. I had a meeting Tuesday afternoon, a quarterly Zoom meeting with some of my peers from central Pennsylvania, south central Pennsylvania. And it seems that almost everyone is, is facing a deficit type situation, some more than others. In terms of millage increases, Berks County to our east has, has announced a millage increase. Blair County, which is a very similar county to Lebanon and it's a fifth class county. City of Altoona is comparable in size to the city of Lebanon. I've always seen Blair County as a very close comparable county and, and they're proposing a millage increase as well. Lancaster County is in a deficit situation, but they're filling that gap with ARPA dollars for I would guess one more year as the ARPA is still available and, and what they have remaining. Same for Cumberland County. Cumberland County is facing a very large deficit. That was a Penn Live article the other day. They have a $41 million deficit. They're going to use 13 million of that out of county reserves and the remainder of that is also ARPA. So.
Which is a one-year solution.
Right. So, you know, they are, they are structurally balanced, I guess, for 2024, but they're doing so with, with federal money that, yes, is one year. This proposed budget is structurally balanced, which is something that, that, that our, our rating agencies look for to see if, when there is a deficit, is a county willing to address that? And if so, how? And obviously you go through all, all of the alternatives, which we did, and there, there are some capital items that are not on this list that, that have been cut for 2024 and we're going to just have to figure out how to do another time. But ultimately the last resort is to go to millage and that's what's proposed.
Can I just add that, you know, the, I don't want to split hairs on your balanced budget versus structurally, but we are structurally balanced versus somebody taking cash and would be giving it a one, kicking it for a year down the road. Structurally means you have enough revenue to pay the expenses and you get those together. That's vital in the, and I don't, we don't chase the rate necessarily, the standard of course, but the cash on hand, 46 days is right in the sweet spot. The pension payments, we've 11th year in a row that we've addressed those after maybe 10 years of neglect in that area. And then also the structurally balanced budget, three legs of that stool. The reward is right, right in front of you with the debt service, where we were able to time the retirement of, of some debt with the perfect, you know, sale of the bonds that we got 2.5% interest over 25 years, which, you know, all that, there was some luck in timing, but if you didn't have the A rating and if you go back to, you know, 2011, we were near junk bond status with that. So all these things that are painful and, and we, we look at taxes as a last resort. That, that's, that's why it took two weeks to get us to where we, where we got to. But, you know, most of the investment, as Jamie mentioned, is in our people. We're investing in our employees, labor costs, and that's why it's across the board in the counties, because generally they're not in the, near able to compete with the public sector as well. We've had to step up and, and get more into the game. So that's, that's where a lot of the pain has come from.
And this surplus, you'll recall, this, I'm sorry, this deficit back in, in November started at about seven and a half million. So over the last month and a half, we've, we've worked at it to bring it from that down to the 5 million. Some of that is accounting for vacancies, which is common way of budgeting these days. All counties factor a, an expected level of vacancy, but I can tell you that when we sat down to analyze the departments to see where we could safely account for some vacancies for 2024, we have fewer vacancies than we did in 23. So, you know, anticipating 2023 and when we looked at departments, thought we could cut, we had to back up and say, no, we really can't cut that much because they've filled, they've filled positions. So I can talk about the jail, you know, is, is, has slipped in the other direction. There are departments and I think department heads will acknowledge that they have been able to, to retain a little bit more. People are not leaving at the same rate and, and even in being able to recruit. You know, the public defender's office is an example of that. We had a significant number of vacancies in attorneys there and out of four clerical positions, three were vacant. All four are now filled. So that's the easiest example for me. So this, this, we started off at seven and a half million. Best we could do is to get to 5 million and it's real.
And just one outlier there, which, which is maybe a little bit in timing at the 4% for the non-bargaining. You know, we're committed to, we have six union contracts out there and if you look right down the line, all four, four percents, except for that detectives at 5%, but those are, that's four sides of, you know, of that unit. But that's why we felt for the non-bargaining, it was fair to push that number to 4%. You know, to say to them, we value you as, as much as, as an employee, we, we want to make sure that that message is clear.
And those, and that's something that you, you recognize while you're settling union contracts too, is that, you know, when you settle on a number for a first year, second year, et cetera, there's clearly the expectation there that you're going to have to, you're going to have to address that one against the non-union as well.
And I mentioned this yesterday to department heads, that Bob's key person, Angel really, and then Michelle in HR with her team really worked hard to get, that, that's where the bulk of this work came from, to get us to something manageable that we, we could present today. So any, any other comments? Some of my colleagues also, I want to thank them for the work that they put into getting this budget to where it is.
I'd like to add, I've been saying it ever since I got this appointment to, to sit here, is that I don't see waste in county government. I think counties of, the taxpayers of Lebanon County are getting good value and that's a testament to the team, Bob mentioned Jamie and Angel and Michelle and putting our budgets together, but it's the day-to-day operations and these people sitting around the room are, are department leaders who are managing their day-to-day operations well. And a lot of the investments were made, I think about last year at this time and going into the budget and learned an awful lot that I didn't know before. And, and knowing we had just increased the wages at the prison, again, to, to, that was a good investment, really to stop the bleeding and, and, you know, we had a real potential liability there if we did not make that investment. And I want to talk about the cost of actually, as we lose employees and we read the exit interview forms from all of our employees and you see the list of today, there's, continue to see resignations and then the number one response of why they're leaving is for more money. And so we have to address that and that's a cost to recruit, you know, and train people. Prison's a great example that we go through extensive training and there's a cost to that and they get the training and, and reach for a higher salary in neighboring counties. So I think this is a good investment. We're not trying to beat those other counties. We're trying to stay on par or at least competitive with those to, to stop that bleeding. It's a very good investment. So I've been seeing this, I mean, last year I thought it was fortunate, last year we were able to, to get by, but you see there's not that and I can say that there's not fat in this budget. There's very little capital expense relatively speaking. If, if that were a bigger number, that's something that you might be able to dip into reserves or do something, but these are recurring costs, the cost of labor. I don't see it going down anytime soon. So we're just going to have to do what we have to do to remain competitive. Again, hats off to our management team.
Jamie, Angel, Michelle, thank you for your hard work on this budget. All the department heads, thank you for doing what you could in your particular instances to keep the expenses within line. I don't think there's a lot more you can say. We do have to pay the bills and thank you all for what you've done.
Good. Okay, we'll look for a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
I also move to adopt the budget as proposed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion, any questions? Jim?
Yeah, we had talked about this, Jamie, coming into the budget season, you had talked about the seven to seven and a half million dollar deficit and then it's now at five. Is it all salaries or there are other areas that were cut that you haven't mentioned to get it to that number?
It was, it was accounting for some vacancy and it was cutting some, some capital. There were a few other items, well, the, the jail gate controls, for example, and that first came in at 988,000, we're down to 330 on that one. So we can cut that by two-thirds just to phase it over some time. There was a paving project that was cut. There were some others that may not be coming to mind, but my head's full of projects and numbers right now. But so, but I would say for, for the most part, yeah, I would, about a million and a half of that probably was adjusting the workforce or vacancies in the workforce. Now, of course, you know, if, if this economy or, or the environment for workforce changes and we start filling those vacancies, we're, we're committed to the positions. So, you know, that could, that could drive the budget up and those vacancy savings aren't there anymore. We did see, like, as I mentioned, we did see a little bit of that from 23 to 24. We weren't able to account for, for quite as much vacancy as we had going into this year. But yes, to answer your question, short order, most of it is, is workforce costs, yeah.
Right, and you're answering the question about what happens if you fill them, sort of, you have to address it.
Right.
And so you're talking about, and you set a hand for it, what, five or six positions? How many positions total were, did you temporarily say?
I don't have that number. We, we did it by, we did it by whole numbers in departments. So if we looked at, for example, you might look at overtime at the jail and project that out. So if you, you adjust that number, it doesn't really, doesn't really take away any number of positions. It's just an adjustment to the, to the overall cost of it. So I'm not sure I have that, but I could probably look for it. It's more than five or six. I mean, we're talking, yeah, we're talking dozens right now, yeah.
Yeah, we have 700 employees and, you know.
700 positions?
Yeah. 700 positions, yes, that are approved. And so, yeah, at any given time, we probably have 80 to 100 vacancies.
Right, but it, but it does not, it does not handcuff a department from filling those positions. It's just a, a more realistic view of, you know, the likelihood that they're not all going to be filled in the year. Or you'll have turnover after filling them.
And it's vital, you know, these positions are, have to be filled somehow, you know, even though we, we budget for the vacancy rate, the public will not tolerate us not having the people to provide the services. I mean, these are services that you can't skin bond.
Right, you know, I said that and so because is, is the biggest vacancies then coming out of the sheriff's department and out of the prison where they, those are two agencies that provide very vital and necessary safety services for the.
I would say in terms of safety, public safety, the, the order in which we're seeing the biggest problems are the jail, 911 and, and the sheriffs in that order. Probation has been pretty steady. They have turnover and all of these agencies understand have turnover, I'll just refer to it as organic turnover, but a lot, a lot of law enforcement departments are, are start, a stepping stone for some people. I mean, there are people that want to be, want to go into law enforcement, maybe be a state trooper or police officer sort of thing. So they'll, they'll get time in, in probation or deputy sheriffs, even corrections and, and that's a reality. So there's, there's always going to be a level of turnover that's attributed to that, but there's also competition. I mean, again, Cumberland or Dauphin County just increased their sheriff's deputy. That's a problem for us. Their sheriff's deputy starting rate, that's a problem for us because, you know, we're just in the midst of, of getting a handshake on a, on a contract and a couple of days later that news comes out. Director DS Bob Dowd, he was at a meeting up in Harrisburg and he was either in close proximity to the, to the, to a Pima dispatch center or a Turnpike dispatch center. I'm not recalling which one it was, but as he saw the employees going in and out, he said it looked like alumni day because he was seeing faces who used to be dispatchers in Lebanon County who have gone, you know, on with the Commonwealth or the Turnpike or someone who, who was paying higher. So, so those are the places we're seeing it. And, and we're having trouble hiring attorneys in both the DAs and public defender's office. The, the pool of attorneys that are, you know, between the ages of, you know, the twenties and their fifties, that pool of attorneys is small, particularly in Lebanon County. I mean, if you think about the looking, you look across the membership of the bar association in Lebanon County, it's a lot of people who are much closer to retirement than they are years, you know, and years left in their career. So that's also been a challenge, this is in the legal hiring.
I did want to ask about that because I know one of the things with the state budget not yet being completely finalized is there's money that's being held up for public defenders statewide. The governor proposed increasing money. Have you increased or stayed the same at what the county is paying for public defenders office?
Increased. And the DA, increased, yeah. We, you know, we were trying to hire attorneys at 50,000 a year and it just wasn't, wasn't attracting anyone. And so the commissioners have given a little more, a little more leeway to those departments and trying to attract. And, and I think we, we have two vacancies now in the public defender's office for attorneys, but it was higher than that. But as Chris Herkun mentioned, it takes a while for those people, particularly if they're, if they're, you know, recent graduates to, to get up to speed. And that's true, he mentioned the prison, 911 telecommunications, they, they don't, they aren't given autonomy on a board for six months until they're through their initial training. So you've invested six months in someone and, you know, you hope they stay 20 or 25 years, but sometimes it's only two and you're back to the drawing board. So, the Jets, attorneys have been a challenge as well.
Anything else? If not, all in favor of the motion? I'm sorry, Matt.
Okay, I'm in a different spot. We've talked a lot about the 911 surcharge, is this budget reflective of a worst-case scenario of that, uh, of being passed?
No, it's reflective of, of flat funding. So if, if the legislature renews that fee, which sunsets in the end of January, goes to zero in the end of January, nothing's done, they renew that at $1.65, that's what's in this budget. Um, if they, if they don't renew it, and it falls flat, there's a $3 million hole in addition to what we're facing.
8,000 a day.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the days are running out for that to be resolved.
Yeah, from what I understand, the House of Representatives has very few days left, three days left of, of, and if they don't act, you know, before the end of December, I would say, counties are gonna be in a position, what do you, I mean, even though it sunsets in the end of January, you know, can't wait until January 31st to renew it, because the, the phone companies are including it in their billing, their, their billing's gonna go out in January, and it's either going to or not going to include that fee on it, and that's a, that's a half billion dollars across the Commonwealth that counties receive from them, so it, it is.
And it's going to automatic property tax increase, you know, now it's a fee on the phone, and everybody has, you know, whether they pay property taxes or not, it could be a, a drug dealer, it could be what, anybody that owns a phone, uh, is helping to pay for that emergency system.
I guess going to that point, the last thing we want to do is raise taxes, but when the state doesn't pass these kinds of, uh, 911 funding fees on time, that puts us in $3 million at a disadvantage, day one, and it's just not fair. That is why our local people, especially widows who don't have big pensions, if any, you know, they suffer when, when we have to raise taxes, we have our backs against the wall, and the state needs to realize that. They need to step up to the plate, pass this fee and not flat fund it, that fee needs to go to $2.60 on a phone. If you go to Starbucks or Dunkin' Donuts, how much does it cost you for a cup of coffee every morning? Where are our priorities? I am really disgusted that this is on the back burner for the state, it needs to come to the forefront today.
Three session days next week, I believe, is the timetable.
10, 11, 12.
They might be back in after the holidays, again, a very short window. What is the county's game plan? Are you going to wait until it sunsets? Because we've already talked, Jamie, this is uncharted territory that the county's never had to face.
Right.
Do you have to advertise it for 30, 21 days again, because you're changing the budget? What are, what are all the dynamics that are in play here if this doesn't happen?
Uh, the advertising, I don't have the immediate answer to. I know that the county code provides for a mechanism to reopen a budget in January of the beginning of a commissioner's term. So this January is that only window to reopen a budget. I, I'm, I don't know, I don't know of an occasion where it's ever happened, maybe it has, but it's not something that happens that I, you know.
It's not common.
It's very, it's very uncommon. Uh, so, you know, I guess the options for the county were, would be, if we're sitting here on December 28th and it hasn't been renewed, they can pass the budget, wait a little bit longer to see if the legislature, uh, reacts, and the options in January would be to reopen this budget. Um, they could recalculate the millage, they could, um, assign some of the, the unassigned reserve cash to it, um, or, or just, uh, ride it out and, and cut, cut throughout the year as we go. I mean, those, those are the only options I see, $3 million is equivalent to, you know, two, three-fifths of, of what our deficit was going into this. So, but I, I've never experienced the reopening of the budget, I don't know anyone that has, but it's there, and I don't know if other counties would do that or not.
Conversely, if we do get the funding, and, and they would go to the, whatever it's 197 or 230, whatever they might do, uh, then we would have, have time hopefully to revisit to adjust downward.
Right, so if, if, say this week.
If we get an increase.
Right, so this week, let's say, they increased it to $1.97 or, or 230, I think is what CCAPS ask was, then yes, there, there may be, uh, well, there would be, I mean, we would, we would adjust the revenue upward for DES and 911, and then there, the amount of county support from the general fund would, would, would lower, and then potentially the millage could go maybe to a .45 or something like that.
Your word hasn't, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to say, if I accidentally said 260, I meant 230.
It's 230, I believe.
If I said it wrong, I apologize.
Okay.
It came out.
Well, you're pretty fair, because Lisa has said that they think it's going to be 195, so they're gonna renew it. If it happens, it's probably at that same rate, so, I mean, I guess, best case scenario.
Well, there's, from your lips.
Well, that's best case scenario, but I, but I'm curious, though, again, if, if it falls somewhere between, and, and, or they say go to $2, granted you have a surplus, but does that then kick the can down the road from, and then you have to advertise, it's just kind of a unique dynamic?
Well, from, from today's introduction of the budget to the final adoption on, on the 28th, we can make some changes within that period, not significant, but, I mean, something that would be, you know, in the realm of a few hundred thousand dollars, we could do that before the 28th.
And the 21 days doesn't, the 20 days doesn't renew.
No, 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 no.
That's just the 20 days.
Right, right, right.
Well, in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same signs, so moved, I appreciate all the work, and we have a budget. Yes?
Um, two things. One is that our assessment appeal hearings are held the third Thursday. There are so many meetings, MPO, um, Conservation District, all, Fireline Preservation, they're all that third Thursday. Is there, um, an appetite? Would you consider moving to the first or second Thursday for assessment appeals? I think Dan's here, if you need any answers.
I'd be willing to think about it.
He would need to know so it can be advertised.
Well, I, I mean, it's, you asked, we need to make a decision right now, on the spot, I'm not prepared. It's the third, and that's always commissioner day, I would think first, I would prefer to have it on the same day if we have commissioner meetings.
The first one?
If we're gonna move it, that'd be my suggestion.
No, officially, that, that is established would be on January 2nd, when you organize all of your boards.
Okay, so we can do that then, but.
That's when it would happen.
We don't have to.
That's when you establish your meeting dates.
We don't have to make a motion today.
No, you.
Okay.
No, well, you don't have any more dates, as, as this board, you don't have any more meetings remaining, so.
Right, I didn't know if he had to have it to advertise for the new year, that was my question.
No, the only thing we advertise between now and then is that particular day on January 2nd.
Okay.
It's gonna be at 11 o'clock when you re, when you organize, you organize the board.
28.
28th is just to pass the budget.
Okay, then, then we have that time.
Yeah, that was advertised, yeah, yeah.
That's what, I wasn't clear on.
11.
On the 28th?
Swearing in is at 9, no, on the 2nd of January.
No, what time is the, the meeting for the county?
Oh, 9:30.
9:30.
Regular, regular time.
On the 2nd?
28.
28 is a regular commissioner meeting, 9:30, it's on January 2nd, swearing in at 9, organization at 11.
There you go.
Please refrain from any more questions.
And then the final question I had was, will we be having a workshop or addressing at a regular meeting the final commitment of all the funds for ARPA, because I think that needs to be done by the end of the year?
No, that's next year.
Oh, the end of next year?
Yeah.
Okay, I was thinking it was the end of this year for 2024.
No, that would be a lot to squeeze in.
Well, yeah, that's why I was wondering, I haven't, we haven't talked about it, so.
Yeah, and, and we don't have the level of funds that Lancaster has kept behind, and so on.
No, I realize that, but.
A significant portion of the ARPA funds were used for the construction of the.
911.
911 for, uh, for the radio system upgrade and for the, uh, the, uh, additional supplemental salaries that you awarded to county employees after, and, so.
So, we have a full year yet, then, we're good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else from the floor? If not, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, we stand adjourned, thank you all.